On the balance of the regular agenda, item nine is an ordinance first reading which would prohibit all gas-powered leaf blowers within 500 feet of a residence.
Mr. Browdy, I want to call on you, but I want to point out that there are a lot of people -- this is not a public hearing item. We've had hearings on this in the past.
May I make a suggestion?
And we do have a lot of people. A lot of people want to be heard.
May I make a suggestion that I will -- happy to give the background of this item to the council and to the public, and if the council wishes a public hearing, I'm agreeable to as much time as the council wishes for a public hearing. Let me start off, Mr. President, by saying that society is going through many, many changes, and one of those changes is that more people are working in the home, as we have learned by the prior testimony that we have just heard about the homework ordinance. So that with 25 percent of people in the home working, the noise that they are subject to from these leaf blowers in their residential communities is very serious, and how we measure that is by the number of complaints that we get, and we get very, very many. Now, secondly, we have to ask, what does this ordinance do? All it does, it's a one-line ordinance, and it in effect says that gasoline-powered leaf blowers are prohibited. We have to ask the question, who benefits? First, of course, the people who benefit are all those who are concerned about their health, because leaf blowers emit pollutants, serious pollutants. They emit volatile organic compounds, and these are carcinogenic compounds. They emit five tons per day, 1,800 tons of volatile organic compounds per year just from leaf blowers. And to give you an idea of the order of magnitude that's involved with a leaf blower, one leaf blower operating for one hour is equivalent to an automobile that travels 250 miles. Now, who else benefits? All those people who want to have -- breathe clean, healthy air, they benefit. And all who are troubled by excessive noise, of course. But perhaps even more important that we have not addressed before is the question about Los Angeles being business-friendly. Los Angeles has been the center of the world for entrepreneurship. We're famous for people who start out, who are struggling, and build businesses or make part-time income in their homes on a part-time basis. These people are subject to this kind of noise and disturbance. And what about all the women who are homemakers and stay in their home and care for their children? They too are the ones who will benefit by prohibiting leaf blowers. So the case is very strong indeed. One other thing, electric leaf blowers are available, and they function very well. They're very inexpensive, much less expensive than a gasoline-fired one, and they are available. You can buy them in Home Depot. So there are alternatives. Also, we have provided here that the operative date is March of 1997, so there's plenty of time for people to make a transition from the kind of equipment that they have now to the kind of equipment that they will be -- have to utilize. So I think that provides the background, Mr. President. I will start out by suggesting a 10-minute public hearing for each side. If any councilperson wants more time, I am, of course, agreeable to it. So I suggest that we start out with a hearing, both sides, Mr. President.
Is there any objections to a 10-minute public hearing on each side? Now, if there's a particular spokesperson representing one side or the other, if you make yourself known, these cards are just put in as they received or received, so we'll just start with Doug Jones. And then after Doug Jones would be Harry Hogo.
Yes, council members and all those that are present. From what I've heard, I understand that we're attacking the issue of noise and we're attacking the issue of pollutants. I'd just like to bring before you rational and common sense people that if we looked back some 15 or 20 years ago and we did the same thing to the blower that we did to the automobile, we would have said goodbye to the automobile. The automobile brought forth pollutants, brought forth noise, but what did we do as sensible people? We went to the manufacturers and to the suppliers of gasoline, and we said, "We have to have a better way to move around." The same thing goes here. We shouldn't be banning the blower. We should be finding better ways to make the blower work for everybody, for both sides. Both sides can be accomplished if we just use common sense. Banning the blower isn't the answer. Thank you.
Henry Hogo, is it?
Good morning. My name is Meredith Baxter. I'm representing the San Lorenzo Homeowners Association.
Well, are you in favor of the ban?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Right now, we'll have the people in opposition.
Okay.
If I can find which one is opposition. Henry Hogo, are you?
I'm just here to provide additional information regarding air quality benefits. My name is Henry Hogo. I'm from the South Coast Air Quality Management District.
Robin Pennergast? Renato Yucindi? Mr. Pennergast?
Yes, sir. Council members, my name is Robin Pennergast with Echo Incorporated. For the sake of brevity, we've done our job. Based on the presentation that was made 10 years ago and six years ago, we have now available a leaf blower in the state of California, operating at slightly less than 65 dBA, which is quieter than the majority of all lawn and garden equipment, and is also functioning within the framework of the CARB standards that were established last year. We feel we've done our job in providing a piece of equipment that can accommodate the most conservative needs of the city of Los Angeles and the state of California. Thank you very much.
Renaldo Yucindi, or something like that. Any similarity to my pronunciation and your name? Take that in consideration. Brian Yamazaki? Juan Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. President. John Ferraro?
What is your name? Your name, please.
My name is Brian Yamazaki. Thank you very much, council members. Council members, the reason why I'm here today is to ask you to please look at the motion from the Environmental Quality Committee on the blower issue. I'd like for you, councilpeople, to look at this issue in terms of a broader sense, and in that matter, look at it, the question being, do we necessarily have to ban this blower within 500 feet of a residence? I'm sure that as a gardener and as a resident in the Silver Lake District, I totally agree with the homeowners, and I feel for them because I live in the area just as well. My concern is that despite all of these issues that Mr. Browdy has come up with, my concern is that hopefully the council must look at the issue from an objective standpoint, not to just blanket a ban over just 500 feet, but rather perhaps regulate it. Regulate the blower usage is perhaps the key. My hope that in the future, council members, there has been information passed on to you people from the Southern California Gardeners Federation and also from various other organizations as well as you're here today. My door is open to you. I hope that you'll consider my plea not to be in favor of this motion. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you. Juan Garcia? Tomas Hago? Roy Mazan? Felipe Sandoval?
Are you going to the ones in favor now?
No. 10 minutes, you said. Can I give you your name, please?
My name is Roy Mazu. I'm a resident of the city of Los Angeles in Sun Valley, 7th Council District. I'm here to represent the Southern California Gardeners Federation and to all the other gardeners who took their time off today that they will have to -- from their work that they will have to make up. And so in order for them to be recognized properly, I want all the gardeners -- was hardy netos de pie? All the gardeners, please, stand up. I'm also here representing the many homeowners that use the blower. They obviously are at work. They cannot be here. Mr. Browdy, in past testimony and also this morning, mentioned the electric blower, and I have one here at my feet. I went to the Home Depot in North Hollywood. There's a Toro model 51582, Black and Decker model BV1000, Ryobi model 160R. All these blowers have a disclaimer. They are not to be used on wet grounds. This is a Sears model, and it's stamped right on the housing. To prevent shock hazard, do not expose unit to water. If the council wishes to hear this plugged in, this is operational, I can plug it in if you wish to hear it.
Diane Wolfberg, I must be heard.
Thank you.
Want to get heard. Get heard. Douglas Truckee? Salvador Botello?
Hi, my name is Douglas Tucker.
Hold on.
Hi, my name is Douglas Tucker, and I'm from Canoga Park. I do a lot of houses in the San Fernando Valley. As you can see, a lot of us, the gardeners here, showed up, only a fraction of us. The reason I'm here, as you know, most of us are here, we're very concerned. We're very concerned about our livelihoods, because if this proposal passes, there is no other alternative at this point. The other alternative would be to use a hose, and a hose takes a lot more time, and we're going to be using and wasting a lot of water. It's not only wasteful use of water, but our customers are going to have to pay for that water, and what happens if we have another drought again? It's going to be very, very bad and difficult, because we've got a couple alternatives. We can use a push broom, and as you know, a push broom's going to take a lot more time. We're going to have to charge our customers a lot more money. As far as me, as I'm concerned, a lot of my customers, over 50 percent, are on a fixed income. They cannot afford to pay a higher price. We would have to charge more money, and it's going to put a lot of us out of work, a lot of jobs we're going to lose. I'm going to just say this, if you go ahead and ban the leaf blower, the gardeners are going to be affected economically. We're going to be hurting. A lot of our customers are not wealthy. They're on fixed incomes. A lot of them are just barely making enough to afford the gardeners as it is. Please understand us, understand our plea. If you ban this, it's going to kill our businesses. It's going to hurt us badly. It's going to affect us economically. Again, we are not -- a lot of my customers are not movie stars, and we are in -- we definitely need your help, so think about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those are -- the time, the 10 minutes is up. Now we have those, I think, in opposition. Noah Mossett are in favor of the proposal?
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you. This is a fair compromise solution to a chronic problem. You have heard dire predictions that are just not factually accurate. This motion provides a sensible alternative. Leaf blowers can continue to be used, but they need to be non-polluting, they need to be non-noisy. That's what this ordinance would provide. The industry and the purchasers have had six years to acquire this kind of blower that's being -- that incentives are being provided to go to. The motion even provides more months. Now's the time to take the action. We can work out any problem of enforcement after this, but pass this today.
Michael Blodgett and Meredith Baxter?
Good morning again. My name is Meredith Baxter. I'm a resident of Los Angeles. The issue of dust blowers is more than anything a health issue, and the facts that I have are from the National Resources Defense Council, the EPA, and the American Cancer Society. When blowers are used as directed, they are hazardous to your health. They blow into the air particulate matter, dirt, animal feces, urine particles, chemical and toxic residues, decaying organic matter, as well as gasoline fumes, and that's not even dealing with the horrendous sounds that they make. 17 percent of all cardiopulmonary deaths in L.A. area, that is about 6,000 deaths a year, are linked specifically to this same particulate pollution, and this is considered by health experts to be the deadliest form of air pollution. It is a conservative estimate, these numbers. It does seem to fly in the face of all rational thought that anyone should be allowed the continued use of blowers by the few when they are so drastically -- they can so drastically affect the health of everyone. Our gardener has used rakes and hoses for over a year now, and we have not suffered, and our neighbors have not suffered either. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Michael Blodgett. I'm a resident of Los Angeles, and I just want to remind the council that the last time we had this meeting, we had some people here from UCLA's Health Department, and they told us about how dangerous these things really are. I mean, Meredith was just talking about 6,000 people a year are dying in Los Angeles from breathing particulate matter. Particulate matter is what is being generated by these leaf blowers. I have, Meredith and I, have eight kids, and I remember one of the doctors from UCLA telling me a little quick story, and I want to tell it to you now. He said he stopped his car down on Windsor Boulevard in Los Angeles, and he looked and he saw a gardener with a leaf blower blowing, and he saw the dust and emissions going into a window through a screen, and he thought, "I wonder what's in that room?" And he thought, "I wonder if there's a child in there? I wonder if there's an infant in there breathing those fumes, and if it's going to change the health of that child for the rest of his life or her life? It is a dangerous proposition to be breathing these things, and we want them stopped." I would say to the city council, "Why not try this ordinance for a year or a year and a half? Why not try it? You can always rescind it. Marvin Browdy will be gone." Why don't you try it for a year and a half and see if there isn't a real advantage to the city because of it? Thank you.
George Wolfberg?
Mr. President, members, my name is George Wolfberg. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Los Angeles. You've probably seen me around here. What you may not know is that in the last 18 months, I've had throat surgery twice. And after the second surgery, I talked to the surgeon and said, "Well, what if this happens again?" He says, "Well, there is nothing else to cut out before coming out the side of your throat." I said, "Well, what can I do to protect myself?" He said, "There's two things you can do. You can drink a lot of water and stay away from dust and mold." This is a dust and mold issue for me. Among the other things that you've heard today, I would like you to support and vote to improve, to put this ban into effect in 1997. Thank you.
Julie Newmar?
Thank you. I'm a movie star, and my gardener doesn't use a leaf blower. I asked her not to. My name is Julie Newmar. I am the much maligned, long-suffering, sometimes hated, upper-middle-class person, but I'm, ladies and gentlemen, I am also a single-working mother of a multi-handicapped child. I work at home. I have to. And last year, losing two to four hours a week from work, from the machinery, and this year about 10 to 15 hours. And with my radio full blast, I look out my windows, made filthy by the leaf blowers, and wonder why my neighbor needs a lawn that for 15 minutes is as clean as a billiard table. There's some mental insanity here. You see, ladies and gentlemen, your laws haven't worked. 60 decibels doesn't work. They know it, and we know it. But we need laws. We need laws to keep from hurting each other, and here's the important part. Otherwise, we take the law in our own hands. For instance, I'm the one who's been going around the neighborhood and spray painting the trucks with the word redo.
All right, thank you.
And I've never broken the law, but I'm thinking, mind you, only thinking, about buying a hatchet and smashing a few tires just to let out my anger.
Please don't do that, and please stand aside, and let's...
Because I don't think you hear us, maybe be -- so far, you've been powerless, powerless to do anything for any of us, and certainly for these good people who, in the long run, many of whom may lose their hearing, and will all end up paying the bill.
All right, thank you very much. Dick Higson?
Good morning. I'm Dick Higson. I'm the chapter conservation coordinator for the Sierra Club's Angeles chapter, and speak on behalf of our 50,000 members. Quality of life and environmental quality includes especially where people sleep and recreate, those quiet residential areas where we try to find respite, even to think or to rest from the stress and den of the city. We need these areas as open space, and not just for the eyes, but also for the ears and the mind and the heart. The ban on noisy gas-powered leaf blowers will boost quality of life and health, both physical and mental, in the city's living areas, and the Sierra Club particularly thanks Councilman Browdy for his longstanding leadership of over 10 years on this issue. And in conclusion, we urge you to do the simple and right thing today, which is to vote yes.
Joan Graves?
How do you do, Mr. President and council members? I didn't realize I was on. I have one thing to say, and I'll just quote in a letter that my husband, I believe, wrote to all of you. "The gasoline leaf blower is an ill-wind that flows no good." Thank you.
Mr. President and honorable council members, I'm Diane Wolfberg. It's nice to be back in the council chambers again. I watched the previous council debate on this issue on your television coverage. I noticed many valid points made by your constituents in support of the ban were lost in such a distracting atmosphere here. Emotional opponents have made unsubstantiated allegations which boil down to one thing: their work will take more time. This is a productivity, not a health issue to them, and I understand that. Let me tell you about productivity. I've kept the same gardener for 20 years. I like gardeners. They work hard. 15 years ago, I instructed him not to use his new leaf blower. His arguments then were the same I hear now. It would take longer to use a rake and a broom. We don't use water since the drought many years ago at all. And he couldn't get my property sparkling clean. Therefore, I twice personally used a rake and a broom to clean up leaves and debris just before his appearance to determine how long it took him to the work the old-fashioned way. I did this seven days after he had timed his cleaning. I compared this with the time it had taken him to do the same cleanup seven days earlier. Had it taken longer, I would have raised his pay, changed my landscaping, or done some of the cleanup myself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jack Allen is going to be the last one.
It only took me the same exact amount of time that it took him to use a leaf blower two times.
Yes. Jack Allen, on behalf of the Pacific Palisades Community Council, we urge you to pass this ordinance. The problem here is that there's one thing the manufacturers cannot fix, and that is these blow up a dust storm whenever they're used. They blow dust all over your house, into your house, all over everything. You wind up going out, you don't save any water, because then you have to go out and wash down everything to get the dust off. As far as jobs goes, we've had a lot of experience with this. No one is going to lose their job. In fact, there will be more jobs, because here's how it works. The homeowner, either, and I have homeowners, and I'm one on fixed income and not a very big one, you either do one of two things. You either pay for it, the extra money, or you cut down the amount of work that the gardener will do for you, or you make an arrangement that instead of cleaning up the yard every week, you have him do it once a month. But it all works out, and it'll mean more jobs because it means more work, so we urge your support.
Thank you. The cards that did not be heard will be part of the file, but we are going to call on Henry Hogo, who is with the South Coast Air Quality Management District. Mr. Browdy's asked that you speak.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Henry Hogo. I'm a planning manager at the South Coast Air Quality Management District, and I just want to provide some additional information regarding air quality benefits. You have our written testimony today. I wanted to point out that there are approximately 150,000 pieces of leaf blowers or vacuums out in use today, and these pieces of equipment are uncontrolled in terms of the emissions that come out of the engines compared to automobiles which are relatively clean compared to these pieces of equipment. We find that most of these equipments have a lifetime of about four to seven years, depending on its use, and there will not be any new emission standards for these pieces of equipment until 1999. So the existing pieces of equipment will still be in use for quite a long time, all the way into the early 21st century. So there is a lot of air quality benefits to be gained with such a proposal today that you have before you, and we're happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Mr. Holden, do you want to be heard on this?
Mr. President, members, this leaf blower measure has been around longer than the attempt to control the areas in which you smoke cigarettes. Now, this city council finally got enough courage, shall we say, guts, to deal with that issue, although it took a lot of time, and there were a lot of lobbying, high-pressure lobbyists on both sides of the issue. And then once again, we have an opportunity to say to our friend and colleague who stood against all odds, once again, as he did with the smoking and other pollution-type problems that we face. So the existing pieces of equipment will still be in use for quite a long time, all the way into the early 21st century. So there is a lot of air quality benefits to be gained with such a proposal today that you have before you, and we're happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Mr. Holden, do you want to be heard on this?
Mr. President, members, this leaf blower measure's been around longer than the attempt to control the areas in which you smoke cigarettes. Now, this city council finally got enough courage, or shall we say guts, to deal with that issue. Although it took a lot of time, and there were a lot of lobbying, high-pressure lobbyists on both sides of the issue. And then once again, we have an opportunity to say to our friend and colleague who stood against all odds, once again, as he did with the smoking and other pollution-type problems that we faced, and he's saying that the leaf blowers are causing us the concern that we already knew about. Not only to our health, but to the environment in which we live. It just disadvantages us in so many ways. And so, Mr. President, I think we should do the right thing. Rodney King said, we should just try to get along. And I best, the best way to do that is to cut down on that noise and get rid of that pollution that being submitted, suspended in our environment. I mean, when I spoke on this last time, I know Rudy is gone, but the fact of the matter is that those particles are so minute, that they can end up inside of you, and you never know until it's too late, until, and then it's too late, you can't do anything about it. But many of these people who work and use these blowers, they have no regard, not only just for their own health, because they don't, some wear masks, some don't, but though those who wear the mask disturb me the most, because here they are with a mask on, blowing this debris in the direction of me, and I've seen that, or kids, or no matter whom, and they don't have a mask on. So they recognize that there's a problem, even with their own deficient equipment. So this is nothing new. We've been warned over and over again, do something about it. I remember when I first got elected, we talked about reducing the noise and also correcting the problem. They don't just blow the trash out in the street, they blow it down to catch basin. I've seen them do that. So I guess, we just have to take some corrective action. We've got to get really tough. It's, I know it's hard, but it's been a long time coming, but it's about time that we act, we act promptly, swiftly. I am not going to be persuaded or dissuaded by this last-minute pressure. I know, Richard, you're smiling. This last-minute pressure to deny the people the quality of life that they deserve and have been expecting for so long, and that is to abandon these leaf blowers, as we know them to be. So down with the leaf blowers and up with the quality of life. Thank you.
Mrs. Walters. Please, please, don't encourage me, you might make another speech.
Mr. President, I hope that doesn't subtract from my time. And I hope that Mr. Holden's gardener will refuse to cut his lawn, and use any kind of equipment there.
I won't pay him either.
Council members, I think that we are just getting a bit too elitist. There are very poor people in this city that keep a roof over their heads, and food on their table, and shoes on their kids' feet, because they do gardening. It's at the lower end of the chain of occupations. And we are going to say, because a few of us are concerned about the noise, the disturbance that it makes for us once a week, that nobody can use a leaf blower. We certainly don't want them to use water, that's the alternative, and we do need to conserve water. But I think that we're just off the mark when we have a society that is so touchy. On the one hand, we talk about supporting business and small business, and here we're going to put the smallest of business operators out of business completely, because it doesn't suit some people. I, no, that's... I'd like to know, Mr. President, does the City of Los Angeles own any leaf blowers? And do we utilize leaf blowers? And where do we utilize them? And what hours are they utilized? I think it's time for us to be realistic about this. And what do we plan to do? If we have leaf blowers, what do we plan to do about the leaf blowers that our gardeners use? I don't think we can have it two ways. We've got a lot of median strips, well, a few median strips in some of our streets that are certainly closer than 500 feet to the homes just across from them. Are they going to stop using the leaf blowers on those median strips? I doubt it. And what happens to the leaf blowers that people have got? Will the ordinance render most of the leaf blower models illegal? Are we going to cause people to have to go find some other way to do this that's going to add a lot of money and time that they don't have in order to stay in the business of gardening? We cannot sit here, council members, with a straight face and a straight heart, and say that we support business when we're going to put these people out of business.
Mr. Hernandez.
You know, members of the council, I've been asking some of us, how is it that we take this ordinance and mix it with the LA Bridges program? Because that way, we bring people closer together on different kinds of issues, when we talk about noise pollution, the environment, as well as what's happening with our kids on a day-to-day basis. But I was asking myself, and I'm sorry to say, none of my colleagues are really golfers, but I never hear leaf blowers on golf courses. And I think it's because a market basically controls that. Employers will not allow for the noise to disturb the people using those golf courses, and they're not going to allow for the environment to affect them either. And so you don't hear them. But the other reality is, when we're dealing with this ordinance, I have a problem with it, because we're talking about people who day-to-day are doing their work, and they use this as one of their tools, and we're talking about taking it away. And as the Chair of Community Economic Development, it is my duty to try and make sure we have incentives out there for business, for job creation, and that's part of a sustainable community. But what I do think about is that marketplace. See, I think that Marvin, if you would consider, call this the Wolfburg ordinance, it would make a lot of sense. And it's because he's a friend. And it does affect people's health, and it's something we as a city council have a responsibility. But again, I'm concerned about that marketplace. And see, what I see wrong with the ordinance right now, is it puts the burden on the gardener. I mean, if you go out and you hire a gun to kill somebody, the bottom line is you just don't go after the person who did the shooting, you go after the person who did the hiring. And when we're talking about this marketplace, this ordinance does not put the burden on the homeowners. You see, we have responsibilities to their neighbors. Every time when I walk out of my front yard and my gardener's using that leaf blower, my reality is, it's not just impacting me, it's impacting my neighbors. And I have a motion that basically amends this ordinance, asking that the burden of the penalty and the fine be put on the homeowner. And what I believe that's going to do, what I believe that's going to do, is it's going to require homeowners to make sure their gardeners use the proper tools. And in doing that, negotiate the price, negotiate the time, and allow for this change to happen in its proper way. Because right now, what we're doing is we're finding the gardener. And finding the gardener, he's going to have homes where he can get away with it, and homes where he's not going to be able to get away with it. The incentive is still going to be there to use a blow dryer, a leaf blower, whenever he can excuse it. But I think that if we put the burden on the employer, the reality is you'll have a much smoother transition. And I think that that fine money should be put into a trust fund for education purposes. And I also think that the reality is, we should have an annual report that tells us how this program is working. If we're going to pass such an ordinance, let's understand who has the responsibility in the marketplace. And hopefully, all of you members will consider the amendment, and remember that on a golf course, you don't have leaf blowers, you don't have the noise pollution, and you don't have the environment being polluted. But I think it's going to create a much smoother transition, and allow gardeners to understand that their employers are willing to sacrifice, and hopefully, if they want those jobs, they'll comply with their employer's request.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Alatori. Mr. Holden. See, I told you, he's going to speak again.
I just got a kind of punch, and I had to come back. This is round two. No, I just, I just want to respond to my friend and colleague. I'm not an elitist. Sometimes you have to use just good judgment, and do what's right for all. Sometime you have to even protect people against themselves when they do bodily harm to themselves and to others. No one will deny, no one in this room here with us today, those who are in support of the leaf blowers, and those who are opposed, would stand up, and in a good, clear conscience and sane mind, and say that that, those particles, and the noise and all, is good for our health. They can't say that. If you can't say that, then what is all this discussion about? I live in a house. It's all right. I live in a house. Some of those who don't understand what we're talking about, they live in apartments and big high-rises, so they don't, they can't relate to that noise. They can't relate to those particles being held on a continuous basis. I mean, I go outside of my house, I say, stop it, charge me more, but stop that pollution, stop that noise. And then, when you work all day and all night, as many of you do, and I know you put a lot of hours in, there you are, trying to sleep. How many people try to sleep and they wake them up like that? They got a noise ordinance, and they do it all the time. And I know Mr. Browdy talked about that you're at home because you have this home-work ordinance, but even on Saturday, they're there. And they disregard the religious Sunday, and they come out on Sunday, and they're there, and they're blowing, and blowing, and blowing. Enough is enough. I'm going to support Mr. Browdy. Mr. Browdy is not going to be with us in the city council too much longer, he's leaving. And I want you to know, he's got a tremendous track record of success. I heard him read off a litany of things in the back room. And I want to add this one to the list, that we can't let you down, Marvin, and more importantly, we can't let the people down that you represent, nor should we let all these people down today, even the ones who want the blower. We're going to protect their health too, because they want to protect themselves. Thank you.
Mr. Alakon.
I'm still in shock from that eloquent presentation, but I, this, this has been a very difficult issue for me, for a lot of reasons. And I supported, I support the ordinance, I supported the ordinance that was introduced to ban gas-powered leaf blowers, but have been working ever since to see if we could deal with a complex issue in a more deliberate way, rather than to pass a sweeping ordinance that would heavily impact clearly the workers, and also the homeowners who pay for these services. The fact is that we do have to put more restrictions on, on gas-powered leaf blowers. The fact is that, however, our focus should, I'm a little unclear as to...